Hello and welcome to a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Today is October 5th, 2021. It's 5:30 and we are convening a study session prior to our regularly scheduled meeting, which will be at 6:45. Madam City Clerk, would you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
And I'm here. Thank you very much. And again, our first item is a study session. It is an update on our housing element process and the housing survey. I understand that we have a member of staff, Pugh Ghosh, here to provide our presentation. Welcome, Pugh.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Good evening, Council. I would actually like to introduce Erika Poveda, who will be conducting our presentation presenting tonight. And in addition to that, we do have our consultant, Andy Flower from EMC Planning Group, who, as you may recall, was the planning consulting group that was chosen and selected to conduct the housing element update. And with that, we also have, as part of our team, Carrie Huesler, who's the housing manager, who'd be happy to answer any questions related to the housing survey and the housing element as well. And we also have John Martier, here, senior planner, and I, who will be available to answer questions. And with that, I hand over to Erika.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Erika Poveda, Associate Planner, and tonight I'm here to give an update on the housing element and housing survey. The city is currently preparing for the sixth cycle of the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA, and the Housing Element Update, which covers the planning period of 2023 to 2031. The Housing Element Update is a required element of the city's general plan and is a plan to meet the housing needs for the city's current and future residents at all income levels. The state requires every city and county to update their housing element approximately every eight years to reflect the RENA for each jurisdiction. Currently, our draft RENA is 4,588 units. And it's important to note that draft RENA obligations are subject to change pending the RENA appeals process. The final RENA plan is anticipated to be adopted later this year, in December, by the ABAG Executive Board. The sixth cycle Housing Element Update is due to be completed by January 31st, 2023. As a reminder, additional background regarding the RENA methodology and draft determinations has been provided last year at the study sessions and meetings on May 19th, July 8th, and November 10th. As part of the 2020 to 2021 fiscal year city work program, City Council established a Housing Survey Subcommittee, which met over nine public hearings between September 2020 and August 2021. The Subcommittee developed a housing survey used to gain feedback on expectations regarding current and future housing in the city. The housing survey was available to the public for six weeks between June and July of this year. And during that time, a total of 935 individuals completed the survey. The majority of respondents identified as homeowners, with almost all being Cupertino residents. Complete survey data is provided in the staff report attachment, and responses from the survey will be used to help inform the current housing element update. The city has also been conducting other outreach efforts to engage and educate the public on the housing element update since spring. And these efforts include two joint study sessions with Housing Commission, Planning Commission, and City Council, which were held on April 27th and May 11th, facilitated by Baird and Drew School. And the city also participated in a virtual community meeting series called Let's Talk Housing, which was hosted by the Santa Clara County Planning Collaborative. The August 9th meeting was specifically for the cities of Cupertino, Los Altos, Saratoga, and Montesereno. And an estimated 38 out of the 60 participants attended for Cupertino. Additionally, at the last City Council meeting, Council awarded a consultant agreement to EMC to be our Housing Element Update Consultant. And work is now underway, and staff and EMC met for a kickoff meeting last week to outline project goals and milestones. The following draft timeline has been prepared to highlight major project milestones. And I'd like to point out that some refinements have been made to the timeline shown in the staff report. So this is the updated version. And two of the primary focuses moving forward will be drafting and analyzing the site's inventory to account for the city's RENA and public education and engagement. The current public engagement plan with EMC includes a vast variety of public meetings and study sessions, community and stakeholder meetings, robust online engagement, and translation or interpretation services. Staff has also reviewed what some neighboring jurisdictions are doing in terms of public engagement options. And while some jurisdictions, like Los Gatos and Palo Alto, are incorporating a housing element-specific advisory committee, these jurisdictions do not have an advisory commission equivalent to Cupertino's Housing Commission. As a note, EMC's current scope of work includes public engagement through the Housing Commission and Planning Commission, in addition to the other engagement options mentioned in the previous slide. Staff therefore believes that the current public engagement plan is robust, and we have EMC here to provide additional information. So if it pleases the Council, we can either stop here to respond to questions on this part of the presentation, or we can continue with EMC's presentation.
What's the amount of time for your presentation remaining, Erika?
My presentation is completed. We just have EMC to give additional information.
Okay. I don't see hands raised at this point, so let's go ahead and complete the presentations before we have questions from Council.
Great. I'll turn it over to Andy Flower with EMC. All right. Andy, we can see your screen now. If you would like to give your presentation?
I apologize. I didn't realize I was muted. Mayor, City Manager, Council Members, Community Development Staff, and Cupertino community members, we are honored to be your consultants through this required update to Cupertino's Housing Element chapter of your general plan. I'm just going to, I realize that I'm also... There we go. Just so you can have a face to the name. My name is Andy Flower, and I'm a principal planner at EMC Consulting Group. And on behalf of our full team, we thank you for selecting our firm, and we look forward to working with all of you. Our firm has been of service to many jurisdictions throughout central California for 43 years. We've got a deep bench of employees, expert subconsultants, and a long history of providing EIRs, general plan updates, and housing elements. Our work with Cupertino will be specific to your community. An equity focus is required from analysis to final adopted policy. The required meaningful actions for this round of housing element updates need to correspond with the specific needs in each community. Equity and diversity extends to income, social standing, access to education, and housing tenure. We need to understand about who doesn't live here and why that is. We're neutral about the RENA numbers. Our goal is to get Cupertino across HCD's finish line on time and with a plan that is reflective of Cupertino community, both present and future. Our engagement plan includes robust online activities and several meetings with opportunities to pass the baton to community members as often as possible. We'll build our surveys and online tools through an iterative process. We've seen the current survey results, such as 76% of participants concerned about traffic and 75% supportive of accessory dwelling units. We'll fold this type of data into a cycle of outreach and reporting back to the community, to staff, decision-makers, and ultimately to HCD. Our timeline is rooted in an expectation of partnership. That's the only way we can get a project description complete this winter in time for a full EIR to be completed this time next year. We'll start by looking to the guidance of the fifth cycle Housing Element Update. The focus for the current element is on infill development, particularly where transit is available. We'll also look for a dispersion of sites throughout the city. It's important to understand that HCD requires a buffer of total sites relative to feasibility and likeliness of development. A 30% buffer for a total of 6,000 units would be a smart starting point. And I'll speak in a moment more about initial buffers. This flow chart illustrates how our online tools with Engagement HQ will be used to encourage, organize, and demonstrate what we hear from the community throughout each step of the decision-making process. We'll encourage community interaction as group activities, such as opportunities to work in virtual teams at community meetings with our Balancing Act tool. This will also be available for everyone to submit their own solution to balancing how Cupertino can meet the housing needs. For this tool to be operational, though, we'll be working with decision-makers and staff with multiple possible scenarios to get our housing balance sheet to be resolved. So this is, we're looking at the buffer, and we'll need to come up with many more solutions than just the initial number and even beyond that 30% buffer. This means we might need to let go of any attachment to numbers and fully consider multiple approaches to coming up with solutions. The state may be mandating this update, and ABAG will be decisive in the final number that needs to be addressed. But the unique way that Cupertino community chooses to solve this is fully under local control. We look forward to working with all of you. I'm available for questions, and I also have a demonstration of the Balancing Act tool, if that's something that you'd like to see.
Great. About how long would that demonstration take, Andy?
Just a few moments, unless there's further questions.
Okay. Well, sure. If you'd like to provide the demonstration before we ask any questions, happy to provide the time here.
Can you see my screen?
Yes. Yes, it's visible.
This example is in Lafayette, California. And this was their initial use of the Balancing Act tool. They'll now be moving into a second iteration, where they'll be focused more on the specific parcels. But for this one, they're looking at generalized areas and asking the community to come up with a balance sheet. You'll see up above, it says you do not have a housing plan. And there's a certain number here that happens to coincide with the RENA numbers. And along here are options. This isn't exactly what it would look like for Cupertino, because there really are several different ways that we can communicate scenarios and options. And we're finding that it's most useful to do so in ways that are illustrative, so that people can have a better concept of what it is that they are adding and subtracting. So the couple of benefits of this tool, you can see here that it's very interactive, so that you can recognize when you're coming close to a balanced sheet, which in this case would be a housing plan. And as density suggestions are illustrated on the map, it gets darker, so you can see that responsiveness. And once a participant is able, or a group of participants, is able to get to the numbers necessary to meet, in this case, the RENA number or that with a buffer, then you can see it says you have a housing plan, and now there is an opportunity to submit. So this is a powerful tool that we would use in the early stages in coming up with iterative suggestions among decision-makers such as yourselves. We'd like to learn from you where sites are that you would like us to take into consideration, sites that, and also details about sites that we could hold into our scenarios and make available for the community to then share feedback. In other cases, there are also opportunities to share comments for particular sites once you get to the parcel level. There's also a way to use this tool, so that we're just talking about the type of units rather than the location of units as an initial step. So we're excited about finding the way that is especially suited to Cupertino and also to work with decision-makers in the process of putting these maps together for the community.
Great. Thanks very much, Andy, and thank you, Erika, for the presentations. And I'll go over to our City Council to see if there are any questions of the presenters at this time. I see Councilmember Willie with a hand raised, and Councilmember Way. So let me go to Councilmember Way first, because I think you raised your hand, then lowered it, then you raised it again, is that right? Or do you want to go after Councilmember Willie?
I'll let John go first.
Okay. Councilmember Willie.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Erika and Andy. I actually really like that thermometer-type tool that you've got, so that we can actually see how our numbers are improving as we add, subtract, or change. Great. My first question, maybe one quick question to the mayor. So how many minutes are we allotting at this point?
Well, we have until, let's say, 6:40, so let's go ahead and put you on three minutes. Thank you for reminding me of that. I'll go ahead and start that with questions, and then we'll go after our questions to members of the public, and then we'll bring it back for any, you know, further questions or comments.
Yeah. Because I have two buckets of questions. First ones will be more like housekeeping questions. And so this, I think, is most for Andy. And so since you're our expert on the housing cycle, first question would be, of course, the numbers are dramatically different than in past ones. Are there any other changes in the sixth cycle over the previous cycle that we should be aware of? Or is it pretty much just the same process with more numbers?
Thank you for that question. That's an excellent question. I believe in leading with equity and sharing that information, that the requirements for equity are robust, and it's really from the beginning to the end, and it's important that there be a through line between them. In other words, as we do our analysis for the needs in order to meet equity, the meaningful actions at the end, when we bring a final document, there needs to be a correlation. And what we're seeing from the revision requests coming out of HCD to the Southern California cities is that too often, there's not that through line. It's one thing to have a solution, but if it's not a solution that is actually responsive to the need, then it's not a useful solution. So we need to be thinking and talking about equity from the beginning throughout the process, so that we can be certain that in the end, the plan is imbued with those.
Great. The importance of equity. Great. Great to hear. Next question would be, with the numbers being dramatically higher than we're used to in the past, it's going to be a learning, I feel it's going to be a learning experience, you know? But it's not limited to us. It's all the communities are going to have proportionally the same type of situation to accommodate. That being said, are you currently doing some housing elements for some of the other neighboring cities? That, you know, I always like checks and balances. I like to learn from what other people have done, leverage different methods. Are you already or working with other ones that we're going to be able to correlate with, share with, learn from?
Absolutely. This is one thing we're very excited about, being able to have the synergistic flow of information across borders and through our communities. So in Santa Clara County, we're working with both Los Gatos and Montesereno. We're also working in the County of Marin. We're working with Fairfax and Larkspur and potentially a couple of other communities. So we're excited about working with a full spectrum of staff and approaches and intentions. And we're also able to work with the collaboratives that ABAG has made available in each of these counties. So we're learning from all sides. And I would say, one of our biggest strengths is we're able to pivot and flow. In other words, we don't believe we walk in the door with all the answers. We're looking to the community and decision-makers to ask questions of you and to hear the questions you have to ask to help us get to the best possible solution for Cupertino.
The probably first one...
Councilmember Willie, let me go on to Councilmember Way, and then I'm sure there will be time remaining. I don't have follow-ups at this point, so I concede overtime for your follow-ups, too, on this round. So Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I have three questions. The first one is, I guess you answered it already, that we could learn, or you could evaluate on what you have learned from HCD's revision request for cities that from the southern part of the California that's already going through the process, right?
Right.
But we're more of an advantaged place. The second is, I see the dates is very general. For 2021 to start, it is for 2021. Do you have any initial dates, like outreach? Or do you have, have you any, that's my question, do you have any initial dates for us? The third is, I remember there is an element that we need to engage the landowners. Whether, so when would that happen?
Well, going back to the earlier question about what has changed, we have at least 11 new laws on the books since the last housing element when it comes to site inventory analysis. So you're right that particularly if we're thinking of using a site that we used with the last round, we need to do some due diligence around that. So we'll be working with staff to determine when the best time is to contact property owners. And of course, that would coincide with any public maps that we're using. In other words, we don't, it's not typically our policy to point to a site if that property owner hasn't been alerted that that site might be discussed. I think that's best practice to communicate. And let's see, there was, I'm sorry, the earlier question was...
What, initial dates? Do you have any initial...
Oh, initial dates, yes. We're getting started right away on our website. So, and we'll be working with staff. We have a standing meeting each week. And we have our community engagement marketing team onboard, even present this evening. So we're working quickly to get our outreach products online and with an ability for people to register, so that they can continually receive updates.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. I see Vice Mayor Chow's hand is raised. Vice Mayor Chow.
I'm sorry, my video is not on. So I have similar question. It seems, I know that we are pretty late in getting started, and then, but then the dates range is still very vague at this point. This is October. And you are proposing 11 public meetings, two community meetings, stakeholder meetings, and some workshops. So when will we have dates, or at least a week, approximate dates for these meetings?
Thank you for that question. We'll be working on our community engagement plan right out of the gate. And we'll be working with staff to determine what are the best dates. We'll definitely want to have a community workshop as soon as we can possibly put together our Balancing Act tool, because we find that that's a very powerful, engaging tool to have community work with in groups. So in order for that tool to be created, we'll have to come up with a number of scenarios.
Okay. And, but then I would think at least we should have dates for council meetings already laid out, right?
I'm sure that staff will get back to you following our weekly meeting this week. And I imagine we'll begin to have some draft dates for that.
I can answer that.
Maybe I don't understand how far along we are. So how many staff meetings do we have already?
If I may, if I may answer that. Vice Mayor Chow, Pugh Ghosh, Planning Manager, we have actually had only one. We had our first kickoff meeting with the consultants just this past week. As you may recall, the consultant contract was authorized two weeks ago. And so with that, we started engaging the consultant. We are trying to get together the technical aspects, so, you know, how to put the map together with Cupertino data, et cetera. That information has to flow to them. And as soon as we are able to put together the technical background stuff, we'll be able to host our first community meeting. In addition to that, we do intend to have additional engagement with the Council, to, as Andy was mentioning, the initial, you know, interest in, from the community, gauge that initial interest from the community and where development might occur in order for us to find those sites and bring that draft inventory for the Council to review and look at, so that we can have a stable project description that we can use for purposes of our EIR. So all of that is intended to occur between now and February. And as soon as we have a better sense of what BMC needs from us and what we can, you know, get together, we will establish those hearing dates.
So the site inventory depends on the interest of property owners. And so how would we be sure that we reach out to all the property owners? So as I understand, we need them to show an interest before we can put that on our list. But then how do we make sure we actually reach out to all of them? What's the plan for that?
So we will be sending notices out to them, letters out to them. I'm not sure if you recall, last time we had sent individual property owners' letters to, you know, particularly where we thought that there might be interest from a property owner or where there were sites that seemed feasible for development or seemed ripe for development at that time. We reached out to them, we sent letters to them, we got letters of interest from some, we got letters of disinterest from others, and those properties were not included on any draft lists. So we intend to continue to outreach with property owners and send notices out to them to gauge their interest.
Okay. So I'd like to...
I'm going to have to put you off, Vice Mayor. You're about a minute into my time, and I did promise Councilmember Willie to circle back. So I do see Councilmember Moore has her hand up, though, so let's go to Councilmember Moore at this point.
Great. Thank you, and thank you, Erika, for the report. I did have some questions on the chart. I think it's page eight, Housing Element Update, the engagement chart, where you have the jurisdictions. And I'm curious, I just want to be reminded, are surrounding jurisdictions on the same timeline that we are?
Perhaps John, are you available to take this question?
So I'm hoping to see that slide pulled up again if possible.
Sure.
I apologize. I couldn't find my unmute button. John Martier, the City Cupertino's Plan Department Senior Planner. Yes, you know, there are certain jurisdictions that are ahead of us in the process. However, there are many that are on the same timeline as we are, including Los Gatos, City of Sunnyvale, that are starting now. And some... That are, that are starting now and some haven't even started. Or even as far as we are, in the process in terms of engaging a consultant in a timeline.
Okay, thank you. And um uh I'm curious about this uh, the, the email that was um sent to the city council, looks like also went to HCD from, from YIMBY Law. And they mention uh AB six eighty-six and government code six five five eight three subdivision C seven. And I, this might be a question more for our city attorney. When um, I'm, I'm concerned about our, the, the outreach aspect and, and I'm also curious if YIMBY Law has uh contacted the surrounding cities with um similar uh types of, of um letters and then, and what, what are maybe down the road, we're going to need to, to look into that. Um and then I have a quest, a question about the impact of SB nine on this process. Uh and SB thirty-five, uh VAALCO, when it will provide two thousand four hundred and two units, but leave us with a three thousand four hundred and ten unit deficit. So I'm, I'm curious about those things. Thank you.
Uh so I could, I can answer quickly about uh eighty-six eighty-six and, and then I think I'll turn it over to the, the planning team to ask, uh answer to some of the planning specific questions. So eighty-sixty-six eighty-six is the affirmative, uh affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements legislation that was adopted uh by the state in twenty eighteen and uh that informs the um, the equity focus that Andy was talking about in her presentation. Uh I, I think some of the other questions about how the different uh pieces of legislation like SB nine, like SB thirty-five um and, and, and the VAALCO project, I, I, I will defer to planning staff on how, how they think those are going to be addressed.
Okay, thank you. But I'm, I'm a little, when I'm looking at the Housing Element Update engagement from the other cities, I'm seeing Mountain View as one survey. Does, does this, uh, does AB six eighty-six then mean that we need to, you know, go look at what our neighbors are having for their surveys, what output that they're getting, who's, who's signing up for it? Uh not, each city, uh they, they don't all have these, these surveys even. So I'm wondering how, how that's going to be kept track of. I don't wanna see us um sort of singled out in particular to um, to uh make an example of. And I'm wondering if, if the survey that we have actually is, is part of uh the, the process or was it just some information gathering uh that uh that isn't necessarily going to impact what decisions are made down the road?
Okay, well, let me uh stop you there. Uh you, I started the clock again after Chris's answer. Uh about a half minute in my time. Um so, so let me do this, uh since we um are, are kind of on a uh a, a set endpoint at around six forty. I'll circle back to Councilmember Willie. John, there's about maybe a minute and a half left of, of my time and then, and then I will go to the attendees and members of the public. But then, um I, I've set five minutes for each of us um for the rest. So if you have follow-up questions or comments, um we can do that after, after we check in with the members of the public. So um, yeah, Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so, okay, so now we've kind of done a lot of the uh housekeeping sort of thing. So the next question is, are we starting with a clean slate? I mean, this is gonna be the sixth cycle. A lot of what we've already approved didn't get filled. Are we starting with a clean cycle, a clean slate and saying if we designate sites that have already been approved, do they count?
Um I can defer that question to maybe Andy. Can you answer that? What is necessary? Do we use a site for the sixth cycle?
Uh yes, there um, there are requirements for reusing uh sites. And it depends on whether it has been used in the last two cycles or in the last single cycle. And so there are specific, there is specific guidance from HCD and um multiple different approaches to that. So we'll be working through that and sharing that information with you through the website.
Okay, just kind of a follow-on to that. Since we've already, you know, um approved another six hundred units at the Hamptons and the if we were to get with it and incentivize we can get them to uh to undertake it within, say, the next couple of years. That then allow us to include that in our numbers?
I can answer that maybe a little bit. Um my understanding, Councilmember Willie, is that the um state law requires us to zone uh sites that are being reused at a significantly higher density than what it currently is zoned at. Um there's certain thresholds. So uh even if uh the Hamptons only wants a certain number of units, we need, uh required to upzone them significantly uh to a much higher number um in order to reuse that site. And if they uh, if we met those requirements that are identified by city and in state law, then we can reuse that site uh to meet our arena numbers for this particular cycle as well.
Okay, I'll leave it at that for now and turn it back over to Mayor.
Okay, great. Um let's go to our members of the public. So Jennifer Griffin has a hand raised. After Jennifer is done speaking, um you'll need to have your hand raised in order to be called on. I see a Kalisha Webster as well at this point. Welcome, Jennifer. You'll have three minutes.
Uh thank you, Mayor uh Darcy. Um I'm Jennifer Griffin and I've been coming to the city council and planning commission meetings since two thousand when my neighborhood, which was in the county annex. So this is our second or third uh housing cycle. Um I will tell you personally that this one is much, much more uproarious than any of the others. Welcome to uh EMC. Thank you for taking on our housing element in Cupertino. Uh thank you to our intrepid staff for work, walking forward into this. I think that, I will tell you right now, I have lost all confidence in my governor because of him signing SB nine and ten. I question his judgment in signing all the housing bills. I think that they have thrown even more up for into the housing element, especially for Cupertino. I do not agree with the increased arena numbers. They are outrageous. And that is something because they use Plan Bay Area. I'm very, very much in disagreement. Therefore, we have to march forward. I respect the fact that the staff and EMC understand that there are a lot of different opinions about what is happening in California, especially with the housing element. And therefore, we need to try to persevere. My, I have several questions. Um my gut basic root thinking is that they just wanna basically upzone every piece of property in California. So on that non-neutral note, um I, I, one, my first question is, when is the land that is involved in the housing element actually physically rezoned? When does that physically occur? I've never, I mean, when it actually goes down onto the deed of the properties? How, does, if, if we do zoning that is high density this round of the housing cycle, does it stay that way for many years? And then, next year, are we going to have hyperinflated? We have five thousand housing units now. Are we gonna have ten thousand next year? I mean, when does this end? And I have a question too. How does SB nine and SB ten affect um our housing element, especially since these little gems are supposed to be dumped on us in January first? Unless they're overturned by lawsuits? Um also, um I, I'm really concerned about YIMBY Action getting in, YIMBY Law getting involved in the city when we're trying to work out our numbers. Um thi- this is kind of like, why are they involved?
And uh we'll go on to Kalisha Webster now. Welcome, Kalisha.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Kalisha Webster and I am a housing advocate for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities with housing choices. As a direct service provider helping people with developmental disabilities in Cupertino and throughout Santa Clara County find independent housing, as well as a CES assessment provider, we see firsthand every day the growing need for people with developmental disabilities to have access to affordable and accessible housing as more group homes are closing and many are living at home with aging parents. Due to the functional limitations of their disability, many of our clients rely upon SSI with a maximum monthly payment of nine hundred fifty-five dollars per month as a major, if not sole, source of income. Those who do work typically are in low-wage part-time jobs, making it extremely difficult to qualify even for the most affordable rents due to the high area median income in Santa Clara County. In addition, a growing body of data indicates that people of color with disabilities experience higher rates of housing discrimination and severe rent burden than either people of color without disabilities or whites with disabilities. As you consider the community engagement plan being presented to you tonight, I urge you to make sure that staff is including specific plans to engage with the most vulnerable members of the community, such as people with developmental disabilities and unhoused, in efforts to assess their housing needs as required by state law. According to the Cupertino Housing Survey completed over the summer, seventy-six percent of the respondents homeowners and only seventeen percent were renters. No data is provided on the disability status of these respondents, nor is there specific information on if any of the respondents are unhoused. Further, only twenty-six percent of respondents believe that there needs to be more housing units developed for people with disabilities. While there are mandates for a number of units being built for people with physical disabilities, no such requirements exist to increase accessibility for people with intellectual or mental disabilities who require supportive services for houses to be accessible. This last lack of accessible, affordable housing for all members of the disability community contributes to the higher prevalence of disability status among people who are homeless and at risk of homelessness. This should, city should also make sure they are actively engaging with people at all income levels, such as renters in fair market and below-market rate housing. The respondent to the Housing Element Engagement Efforts should reflect the diversity of Cupertino so that we can make sure that over the next eight years, we are creating housing that better serves all members of the community and not just those with the privilege of housing security. Making sure that all community members are living in safe, stable housing will not only benefit those at risk of displacement or homelessness, it creates a more sustainable, safer and healthier community, healthier, sorry, community for all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kalisha. And we'll take this back to council at this point. I have the order of hands being Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Way, you still have roughly half a minute from your previous allocation. Otherwise, uh the rest of us each have uh five minutes. Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay. First, I'd like to share a list of sites that I shared with the former uh city manager ear- earlier last year when she tried to do, did, tried to do a housing survey last time. These are the list of sites she included in her survey. And, and then I realized when we did the housing survey this year, we omitted a lot of actual potential sites. And most of the sites we included are, are not so, we included even some of sites that are already have approved project. So these are the sites that should be considered. And then I also emailed this list of other sites that I think are missing. For example, the entire area around the post office where um there, there is a small shopping mall with the Starbucks, for example. And the, the area west of post office and some small areas along foothill. And the Bob Road area that's not included. And the area right across from the Bob Hill on the north side of Stevens Creek. And we have area that's in um South eighty-five and Deanza where Yamaguchi Nursery is located. And we have small shopping center at the northwest corner of Deanza Prospect. So these are the full list that I have shared with the city manager, but I don't think it's ever shared with the council. So I just want to put this on the record first. And then my question is for, I understand that uh it's mentioned that we have housing commission. Therefore, we don't need a uh citizens advisory committee. However, in the last housing element cycle, I don't think the housing commission was ever involved in any way. So if we would like the housing commission to be actively involved, I hope next time when the staff present, we will see how we could actively involve, utilize the housing commission in the process. And then the next is uh and, and, and yeah, I think there, there are a lot of com- complex info, like what, whether a site can be counted in this cycle. And yeah, I hope to get that in writing, either I'm, I guess FAQ on the website might be um some information, but I hope to get some more detailed legal requirement in writing. And the last question is regarding the idea of equity. Um I think I, I understand that this, this cycle, we have, we need to provide um the affirmative for, for the housing, uh there is the state law. However, I, I'm curious what type of policies a city can adopt.
Two more minutes.
Control that. Because we can control who moves into our city. We can say no more Asians because we have too many. And we can control the market rate, rent. We can say that's just approval of this lousy, low qua- quality apartments so that the rent wouldn't be too high. We can do that. Then how as a city, we can provide policies? And also in terms of subsidized housing, the city only get five percent of the one percent of property tax people get. The rest goes to the county and the state. Without funding, how could the city provide the subsidized housing to force for the equity goal? Can, can uh the consultant provide some insights? Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um so you've got about a minute left and we go on to Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. Uh so I did not get an answer regarding SB nine and the impact and it will HCD be providing some guidance on that. Uh are we able to take the number of units that we have currently and use a percentage of, of those units in order to come up with uh what total we might have? I also had the SB thirty-five question uh regarding if, if those units are going to count on our next cycle. And I'm also concerned that our land use designations uh don't end up worsening the housing shortage on some of these sites. If we have a land use designation which would uh not allow for adequate housing for the amount of uh office or, or commercial space uh on a mixed-use project, I'm, I'm very worried that that will be a problem. Uh but I did read something from our twenty fourteen general plan EIR, which I would like to have an explanation for. And it said, under the proposed project, let's see, um for den- it's regarding density. This says the city currently calculates residential density as gross density, which is the number of units divided by the acreage of the entire area. Under the proposed project, the city would change the process of calculating residential density to net density, which is the number of units divided by the acreage of residential land. The residential density under the proposed project, as described in this chapter, has been calculated by net density. Uh I was wondering if staff could explain, are we using net density or gross density at this point? And what, what are the differences between them? Thank you.
Uh yes, I can actually take that question. So um there was a definition of what a gross lot area was and that included a certain amount of land that would be uh inclusive of the public right of way, up to thirty feet, I believe, into the center line, uh or in some cases to the center line of the street. And residential density used to be calculated based on that gross lot area, which was, which included a portion of the street. However, uh that was changed to ensure that only the area that is owned by a property owner is what is used for density purposes.
Okay, thank you. So um and it also would be the entire lot. So it wouldn't be that only portions of the property would be at that density would be the, you would get the number of units times the entire.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And did you, um, Hugh, did you happen to have an answer about um SB nine, if you know anything about that? And then the SB thirty-five question. Thank you.
Um Councilmember Moore, if you could just go over your SB nine question so I can uh accurately answer that.
Okay, well, in, in, in my mind, because it allows the lot splitting or the duplexes across all of the single-family residences and, and actually we also have the ADU law, but we'll put that aside for now. Uh it would seem that there could be a foreseeable number of units generated from SB nine and that it would be unfair to the city to not be allowed to anticipate that being used. And so I'm wondering if there is some guidance uh coming from HCD at this point for what do we say? Is it, is it ten percent? Is it five percent, fifteen? I mean, we need to have something, you know. Is it, is it ten percent? Is it five percent, fifteen? I mean, we need to have something, you know, for, for this change that's happened, I'm hoping. And then with SB thirty-five, let's, assuming that they, let's say in, in a year and a half, two years, they pull the building permits. Is, do, do we get our, our credit for that side of the property at that time? Um, or not? Thank you.
Um, so for the SB nine, SB nine question, it's an excellent question. Uh, those thoughts have been going through our minds as well, and I know we've kind of brought it up with the EMC as well. Uh, we've also brought it up with the Santa Clara Planning Collaborative to understand how, you know, how many units can we use from that? Um, you know, my understanding based on the discussions that have occurred so far is that there have to be further discussions with HCD. And um, there have to be certain assumptions that HCD needs to buy into. For us to figure out how many of those minutes we can um, uh, you know, actually um, count towards our arena. So we're still working that out. We don't have any information, more information to share, unfortunately. I wish I did. Um, I, as uh, for purposes of uh ADUs, for example, there was a, a large ADU survey that was conducted by our planning collaborative. And there was a certain income level, you know, um, that was um, proposed by them to HCD, and my understanding is that might be accepted by HCD. So that might be the income levels that we could potentially use for our ADUs for the upcoming uh, the cycle, for as an example. So we were wondering how we would come about, you know, determining how we would account for the SB nine units. So we haven't, there's no conclusion on that yet. Um, as far as the SB thirty-five project, it is my understanding that only the affordable housing portion of the project. Can be counted towards our arena as long as the units are. The building permits are approved after June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, is my understanding. And this is based on my recollection of a question, similar question asked in the past of Barbara Keltz, and I think that is what she said. Um, so if, if I am incorrect on that, I will correct myself at a later date when I get more information. This is what I recollect.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Um, Councilmember Moore, so that, that last question, uh, about ninety-second answer, so um, I'll, I'll seat over whatever time I have remaining. Uh, at the end of our cycle here, uh, if you wanted to conduct a follow-up commentary. Councilmember Willie, you're next.
Yeah, hopefully, uh, the public member, uh, Kalisha is still on the line. It sounds like she's very knowledgeable for individuals with mental challenges. So I have a question for her. It sounded like she said that uh, the group homes or group facilities are closing. I'd like to understand that if she's still online, and then I have a couple of questions that she might also be able to answer.
Uh, Kalisha, are you out there? If uh, you're listening, please raise your hand. Great, um, I'll unmute your microphone. Okay, uh, Councilmember Willie, did you have a question?
Yeah, so first off, I think I'm hearing that she's saying for mentally challenged people. Group homes are closing, and I'd like to better understand that.
Uh, so Kalisha, if you can unmute your mic, if you wanted to answer that. Hmm, I, unfortunately, it doesn't look like we're able to get audio.
Well, she, she can, she can definitely email us after the meeting. So let me just kind of go on with my questions and maybe your staff can pick the ball up and run with it um, after the meeting. So at any rate, yes, here we are, um, you know, needing to be fully inclusive. And mental uh, disability, like she's saying, are not being covered. Where physical uh, challenges are. So that being said, well, how can we maybe get uh, mental uh, challenged people accommodated in our housing element? Okay, what I'm kind, kind of putting out are a bunch of puzzle pieces. We've got Westport, which, you know, is a, has a lot of seniors, but not all senior. And yet they were able to integrate in a twenty-unit memory care. Requires a lot of services. And so the, the uh, mental challenged individuals, I feel, would also need a lot of services. So when I hear that the group homes that would be able to leverage the services, closing. You know, I think in the discussion that she had was kind of indicating provide. For people with mental challenge that are affordable. But I'm thinking, you know, the, the facilities and things that are truly needed, if we were to say affordable homes. And affordable for mentally challenged people, yet it's not, you know, able to. Services and things for them, I, I think we wind up stuck. So I, I'd really like to figure out, maybe she has some, some information. How we could, you know, uh, propose to a developer like Westport. To put in some type of a facility for mentally challenged people. Where they're going to be able to leverage all the facility. If it's a four-hundred unit complex and ten units. Were intended for mentally challenged with the support services they need. I'm putting that out there to try and, wow, can we do something with this piece of the uh, of the uh, game? How can we also include that? So I'll leave it at that. I'm definitely all ears for anyone who has some, some ideas for us to work with. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Uh, I, I note that Kalisha put her hand down and put it back up, so maybe uh, she reset her device, so let me try to see if this works again. Can you try one more time, Kalisha? Okay, unfortunately, we can't, we can't hear. Okay, um, let's see, it looks like we have a hand up from Vice Mayor Chow. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, your, your, your time did expire. Let me check in with Councilmember Wei, uh, who hasn't spoken.
I, I hope consultant can ask my question, the question.
Right, well, let me, let me go through the uh, cycle of council members first to give them an opportunity to speak. Before I start sitting over my uh, remaining time uh, to, to you and perhaps others. Councilmember Wei, did you have any comments?
I'll, I'll let Vice Mayor Chow ask the question.
Okay, great. Um, and, and did you want Vice Mayor Chow to utilize your time or?
Yes, please.
You're okay with that? Okay, great. Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, so the last question I had was how the housing element could help with the. Uh, the affirmatively further housing uh, policy. Because a lot of things are beyond the city's control. We can control who moves in. We can control how high the rent goes. We can, we can control how much funding the state gives us for, to subsidize housing. So. How, what kind of things other cities are doing or HCD is looking at? In housing element. Curious.
Andy, I think you can take that one.
Yes, thank you for that question. Uh, and I'm, I'm so excited that this is something that we're hearing from you. And we're going to look to you throughout this process and bring you ideas. And um, we'll bring the full council ideas, but we'll be looking to you particularly because I can hear that this is important to you especially. So, uh, one concept, of course, is, is the idea of dispersing. Affordable housing opportunities throughout a community, so that it's not segregated into only one area. So that's an example of how um, policy can also correlate with a site inventory. But we'll be bringing all kinds of ideas forward and um. One opportunity also is when we use our mapping exercise, we can assign certain equity score for um, for choices. So that there can be an educational process while uh, selecting um, for, for the mapping exercise. Along with some information so that people can understand the relationship between choices and uh, resulting equity concepts.
Could you maybe point out some finished housing element by? Uh, that, that has, I want to see concrete examples of how it's done in terms of policy. Because equity could, even equity score a lot of times is very subjective. And if you say we want, don't want to segregate, but low-income housing needs to be near transit. Then invariably, it's going to be in certain areas where the city there are choosing. And for example, I've seen equity being used to actually create inequity. For example, recently, CUSD is trying to uh, close certain schools. That actually would be in favor of alternative schools. They are saying, oh, we want equity for alternative schools. But alternative school serves only point five percent of low-income population. That in their school community, which is actually serves the most privileged students. So using the word equity, they actually created inequity. So I would like to see concrete policy that actually works. And also the idea that a small city like Cupertino could actually. Because we are not like Oakland. You can have a city with multiple income. A small city like Cupertino, how realistic it is to say we want to have all kinds of income levels, all kinds of races that's. That match the bigger area. I don't know, is there a real? Um, there are policy that can, that can work and yeah.
If you want a quick response.
Yes.
I appreciate your critical thought on this and uh, and I agree that sometimes something can appear as, as higher equity. And uh, with deeper thought, uh, it can be recognized as, as not being the case. And that, that's true for some of the revision requests that we've seen through HCD. So the required meaningful actions that is uh, through AB six eighty-six or affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements. Will, I, I, I'm inspired to share some um, examples of that maybe through our website. So your question can have a direct um, relationship to how we construct our website and what we share on that website. And that's true for the whole community. So we look forward to hearing from community members and what you would like more information about. As we build this website and we create portals directly to our efforts. So that as the website grows and changes over time, it is truly iterative. And that in the end, we can have a list of meaningful actions for the city of Cupertino that. The council as decision-makers feel confident will have meaningful results.
Great, uh, thanks so much. Let, let me go on to uh, Councilmember Moore and then Councilmember Willie as we uh, attempt to wrap this up before six forty. Councilmember Moore, uh, and I'll, I'll go ahead and start my clock here.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanted to bring up that the low-income housing tax credits, as I understand it. Uh, it seems to favor non-dispersal, so in, in the project which Councilmember Willie mentioned. With the, with regards to the, the memory care units, the twenty-seven memory care units. Um, the below-market rate senior units were all um, placed in, in one building. And uh, and, and the reason was we were given was for financing. So I, I think we have some, some things that are working at cross purposes. I'm also concerned, so I, I brought up the Valco project. That project for the very low and low-income units, uh, they were small three hundred and eighty-eight square foot studios. And five hundred and twenty-eight square foot one-bedrooms, uh, which seem to be discriminating against uh, families with children. Who might want their children to come to our school districts. And uh, and that's, that, that was a concession that was made. Is there some? Are, are we going to be in trouble with HCD if we continue to allow developers to, to choose these concessions? And apparently discriminate uh, against families with children moving forward? And in that case, it's the, it's twelve hundred and one units.
Uh, any of a brief response from staff or any of our outside consultants?
Um, I'd just like to state that I think we will be considering all of our uh, policy options with regard to make sure that we leave equity into all of our policies. And present uh, options, legally viable options for the council to consider and adopt. And we also, like I said, we have to make sure that uh, it passes muster with HCD. So at this point, I don't think we have a concrete answer to that, but that's the best response I can give you.
Okay, great. Uh, let's go on to Councilmember Willie at this time. Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, fairly quick one, this one. So um, because of the importance of this uh, housing element and the impacts that it'll have on our community. Uh, I'd like to suggest that we have a actual schedule of when we can get updates. From staff in our city council meetings. I know we're always loaded in our city council agenda. But this is so important that I, I'd really like to, you know, have a good understanding. It's going to come back, say, a month from now with a brief update. Two months from now, another brief update, so that we're totally informed and help guide the process. So I, that's my request.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Um, Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to say anything? Uh, thank you for allocating your time. There's about a minute left. I wanted to make sure that you have an opportunity to weigh in if you wanted to.
No, I, I'm so good.
Oh, oh, okay, uh, uh, Councilmember Wei, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, Councilmember Wei, thank you for ceding your time.
No problem. I have just one real quick question. So I, I, I think the piecemeal um, approach might not work. So will we be able to get a more um, holistic view of, you know, the six thousand units we're looking at? So if we're doing a piecemeal, it's very hard to, uh, you know, allocate. So what, what is a consultant's uh, approach?
Um, again, I think I, I, I can try to start to answer and then if Andy wants to jump in, he can. Um, I think the first step of doing that would be to identify what a healthy buffer would be, whether it's six thousand more or less. You know, what is that ideal number that, you know, that we can um, sell to HCD in essence? Our arena is forty-five eighty-eight, uh, which may change um, when the final arena is adopted at the end of the year. And then the buffer is uh, you know, dependent on uh, what we can uh, you know, come up with as a. Uh, and have a justification for HCD. Um, with regard to ha- having a holistic view, I think those mapping tools that Andy shared. Uh, will be able to help the community and the council envision where these units might go. Um, you know, in terms of equity, you know, uh, how can we get more low-income housing, uh, you know, families? Or individuals into our community, you know, that is the design aspect of any um, you know, project. And uh, there, there could be units that are uh, you know, low-income by design and not necessarily by uh, you know, just because they're large units. So I, I'm not sure exactly how it'll end up, but in terms of the mapping.
Oh, okay, you know, I'm going to stop you there and just, you know, try to wrap it up. Um. So I, I'm going to try to allocate some time for myself. Uh, you. Hung, did you have anything else that you wanted to mention?
No, I'm, I'm good, man.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, just generally when we're on a timer, try to be concise about your, your comments, uh, especially given the fact that. Uh, that's cutting into, you know, Councilmember allocation time. So that's, that would be much appreciated uh, in the future. And then, you know, basically, you know, I've been listening very closely uh, with a lot of interest with regard to um, our consultant here. Uh, one of the things that I did uh, do was I checked in with Los Altos uh, recently, Los Gatos rather. And um, it does sound like they have, you know, some different elements, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, we have the same consultant, we're paying EMC three times more than Los Gatos. And so you, you, I was very appreciative of what I heard, so I think that's a great beginning. And so um, you know, I, I do want to reiterate what I said at the end of our last meeting on this. That I would like to see that we get our value for the uh, resources that we're putting into this. Um, and so uh, one of the things I think that we need to identify earlier rather than later. Is the public expectation of the timetable when we'll have these touchpoints with um, our, our, our public and council. So if we could get that produced, um, you know, with relative expedience, that would be much appreciated. The other thing, um, I, I did want to put in um, a word of support for the uh, developmentally disabled housing. I know from a legal perspective, you know, you basically fall into a very low income. There is no actual legal categorization for extremely low income. Um, but it, it is something that I find um, very compelling and important uh, for our community. So what we can do there to support, I would absolutely um, get behind that. Well, um, we're rearing up on six forty. I want to thank everyone. We will have plenty of opportunities to check in over the course of this upcoming year. Um, and so uh, thanks very much, uh, Andy, as well as your colleague. I, I did see Lauren from AMC here as well. And uh, thank you to our staff for preparing this. So let's go ahead and. Uh, adjourn the special meeting. We'll reconvene in, in about five minutes at six forty-five for the commencement of our regularly scheduled meeting. Thanks very much.